Good evening, welcome to the council meeting, December 2nd. If anyone in the audience has amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. I'm not seeing any. Let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mary, can you do a walk call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns here. Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Nisto?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Pupiers?
Here. Thank you, Mary. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The council have any board reports to share? Nope. I just want to say how gorgeous downtown looks and thank our staff for all the hard work putting up the lights and getting everything ready and even our businesses that are joining in with all of festivities, so it looks great down there. If you haven't, people online, everybody here is going to see it when they walk out the door, but everybody online that has not been downtown at dark, get down there. All right. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to approve or consent agenda as published?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council and not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. When reasonable disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Mary, anyone sign up for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Dean Guit.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because of a situation we're facing with public safety. City ordinances and the growing impacts of the unmanaged street campaign continues to be unacceptable. It's getting worse, not better. We now have a longstanding local nonprofit, Nip and Thrifty, that actually is offering a hundred-dollar reward just to get their own shopping carts back, when we have a city ordinance pertaining to shopping carts. To me, that's 100% unacceptable. It shouldn't be necessary in a city that already has a shopping cart ordinance on the books, when a nonprofit has to spend donor dollars this way. That tells us something is fundamentally broken in our own enforcement and accountability systems. The problems aren't limited to that. Broom Park continues to show significant ADA violations of the sidewalks, ongoing garbage accumulation, and clear violations of the conditional use permit by community lifeline. Because the city is not enforcing its own standards, and we all see the consequences of this every single day, back in November of 2021, there was an ordinance passed 1-977-0927 addressing street and camping under Chapter 8.74. And that was four years ago. That's roughly 1,460 days. There were some revisions on that, and we revised it again back in June. So even after that, we have 120 days from there, and we still only have eight citations issued for street camping? I mean, there's multiple street campers out there. There's 365 days in a year, and there's five street campers. How many violations do we have? So let's see the percentage on that. All right. So we have to ask, what are we doing? If we keep doing the same thing and we keep expecting different results, isn't that the very definition of insanity? So where do we go from here? Do we need to establish or empower a nonprofit to transport individuals to areas with more robust services? Do we need stronger enforcement and real accountability? Do we need mandatory treatment options, expanding skills, life skills training? When necessary, incarceration that could lead to a clear head, and then we could go into treatments or life skills training? Should we start tying funding for NGOs to measurable positive outcomes instead of just good intentions? There's a lot of good NGOs out there. There's a lot of good people that want to help people, but there's a lot of people that just have intentions, and intentions are only intentions until they become an action. All right. So I'm not going to finish reading everything that I had, but you guys kind of get the point. We've got to figure out what we're doing in our community and how we can get together to help everybody. It's not compassion to allow somebody to sleep on the street. It's not. We have people on the sidewalks in the rain. It's not good. Let's do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that we have signed up for.
All right. We have a presentation for the Civic Center Event Power Box from LTAC report. City manager, Mark C. Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. In light of the activities going on and Northwest event promotions and the Hanson family who led this project last year, I'm going to give a brief presentation to you tonight. This was an LTAC-funded project to provide a 200-amp power service to the parking lot next door of 425 West Coda to serve the very functions and activities that we're seeing happen there currently in this weekend. So it started with the Christmas tree maze several years ago and using generator power, power from across the street of the Civic Center. It wasn't, you know, it just wasn't the most logistically realistic possibility or scenario. So the Hanson's led this effort and requested LTAC funds earlier, late last year for this year, to install that 200-amp power service. Q-Electric did that last, early this year, I guess, and it's in place now. So that kind of sums up the project and makes it eligible for reimbursement for the LTAC funds.
Any comments or questions?
It's a really good idea to do that. Definitely can do things downtown, and also it's going to help the farmers market in the summer. So instead of them bringing generators in and having that loud sound, we're going to have really quiet power and electrical power instead of gas generated. So really, really great idea and great that we're doing this. So thanks for that report.
All right. Our first business item tonight is related to the Shelton Employees Guild. Human Resource and Risk Manager Leandra Sharp has the details for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I bring to you this evening a labor agreement between the city and Shelton Employees Guild. The Shelton Employees Guild is one of the three labor groups that perform municipal services. This guild is comprised of our public works, parks, and facilities, the city, and the guild, party, and company, came to an agreement for a three-year contract from 2026 to 2028. I'm requesting your approval to move this contract to the next meeting, December 16th, for further consideration. Do we have any questions?
All right. Mary, maybe we have a reading of Resolution Number 1417-1125?
Resolution Number 1417-1125. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute the Shelton Employees Guild labor contract.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place Resolution Number 1417-1125 on the action agenda on the next council meeting on December 16th, 2025, for further consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
So I'm really glad that's a three-year contract and we get to lock it down for that time and we don't have to renegotiate again. So thank Leandra for your work, and I'm really happy that we got to at least do a 2.7% cola for our employees. Thank you, Leandra.
Anyone else? Thank you, Leandra, your staff, the union, and the staff negotiating for sticking with us, and I see that it looks like it's a 2.7% raise the next three years, and our staff's worth way more than that, but I appreciate all the hard work.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I too want to recognize the leadership team that sat across the table, as well as the guild themselves. This has been a great working relationship with the Shelton Employees Guild. They're very hardworking employees. The comparables out there are higher than what you're seeing today as well. They appreciate our financial consideration and the constraints that we're in and trying to build a sustainable budget moving forward and agreeing to a three-year contract. I like this, it's really important. We did this last year with our Police Guild, as well as the Customer Service Guild at the same time, so we appreciate our working relationships with them. I think it's very strong and something we don't necessarily see in other municipalities. So I want to recognize them and our staff that worked so hard on getting this to this point and fruition, and we won't have to bring another contract back to the council for another couple of years.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second to forward Resolution Number 1417-1125 to the December 16th, 2025 action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, up next, Parks and Rec Supervisor Jordan Crumples has information about park advisory committee appointments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring three appointments. One is a reappointment for the Parks Advisory Board. This committee meets monthly throughout the year, and they help bring recommendations to you guys for future parks and rec resources, making regulations, recommendations on park rules and regulations, being a liaison to the community, and assisting with comp planning. Like next year, we're going to dive into the cross trail project, and we're doing our cross plan next year. So we'll be a big part on that, so having a field team for that is an excellent thing. Our first one is Ted Philinen. He is reappointing for a three-year term. He came on early, came on beginning of this year, so now he's taking on another full term with us. He is a city resident, so it's good to have city residents in the group. And then the other two are new members. Bill Scholl is a county resident. He's also Alliance Club member here in town. And then Erica Adams, also a county resident, but also has a business in the city, which is great. So having two new members will be good to have. So, and you have any questions?
All right, thank you, Jordan. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward the appointments for the Parks Advisory Committee to the December 16th, 2025 council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
How long is the term?
Three years, sorry.
So we still have the old crew, Kathleen and...
Yes, we have Kathy and Diane Soren, who will renew every, I think her term is up to 2.7.
Okay. Five total then?
Five total, yes.
All right. All right. We have a motion and a second to place the parks advisory committee appointments on December 16th, 2025 action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're resuming out of a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Intern Finance Director Terry Snitzer will share information for us about 2025 budget supplemental.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Tonight, I bring you the 2025 supplemental budget to the original ordinance that was passed back in November of '24, which was Ordinance 2023-0924. This is to appropriate and reappropriate some funding to account for some expenditures that are in addition to, so that we make sure that the funds don't, are within the budget. And so I'm going to focus on Schedule, or Exhibit A, and which, I think I got that. So for the general fund, we're asking council to approve an additional $20,000 for additional expenses for the architectural electrical work locates for the Civic Center, and $5,042 for additional budget authority for the library HVAC expenses. So the library did go a little bit over, and so we're just asking to true that back up. For the capital resource REIT I fund, we're asking additional to transfer the $20,000 from REIT I to the general fund for that Civic Center architectural electrical work locates, and then transferring $35,000 additional budget for the Civic Center Universal Power Supply to the Capital Improvement Fund. And then the REIT I will pay the $5,042 additional budget for the HVAC, the library HVAC expenses. And then for the Capital Improvement Fund, the $35,000 that was talked about for the Civic Center Universal Supply, and then we are de-allocating $89,000 for the maintenance division yard that we had set aside, and so we're putting that back to the general fund. And then for the sewer, we're asking a $100,000 additional budget, basically due to a storm weather damage that caused pumps to go down and any associated costs with that. And then $90,196 for the front street pipe removal project. We're moving that to operations. It's not a capital project, so we're just re-appropriating that money to the sewer operation fund. And then for the solid waste fund, we're showing that we're just a little bit over what we budgeted originally, so we're just asking for $5,000 just to cover any other expenses for the closeout of the C Street. The sewer capital fund, this is again transferring the $90,196 to operations, and then again, we're de-allocating from the sewer capital fund, the $75,000 for the yearly pavement preservation, and $133,500 for the maintenance division yard. So we're just not doing those projects or not setting aside those funds for '25. For storm capital fund, we're just putting back $200,000 that we set aside for the yearly pavement preservation project, and $22,500 for the maintenance division yard, and we're putting that back to storm operation fund. And for the water capital fund, we're putting back $38,500 that we set aside for the maintenance division yard. So, and these are just to, even though we're transferring from one fund to another, is to account for those expenditures, those transfers are considered expenditures. So we need to make sure that we account for that in our budget, even though it's kind of making it, but it's really not.
Thank you, Terry. Does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't.
All right. We have a reading of ordinance Number 2037-1025.
Ordinance Number 2037-1025. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December 31st.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we forward ordinance Number 2037-1025 to the December 16th city council meeting for further consideration.
All right. Comments or questions? Thank you, Terry, again, always for your hard work. I know this is kind of like, just finishing out the year and making everything right for the auditors when they come next year. They say we did a perfect job like always. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second to forward ordinance Number 2037-1025 to the December 16th council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public hearing is closed, resuming to a regular meeting. Our first action item tonight was Assistant Public Rest Director Brent Armstrong presenting information about reclaimed water tank project.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I forward a reclaimed water tank project award. This was first breakback in November 4th by Aaron Nix. Now we have the, opened the bids. We received four bids ranging from $2.26 billion to $2.803 million. We've gone through procurement process, and this is to build the 500,000 gallon tank. Right now, we only have about 35,000 gallons of storage out there, and this project is part of a series of projects that we're doing to be able to upgrade the MBR treatment plant. We have the headworks going in design right now, is one of those projects also, but the qualifying bid, it was by Roglands, and it was $2,663,076.82, which was $82,667.82, hundred engineers' estimation. We do need to bridge the gap of our funding for about $295,671. But we have gone through, found projects, some of them which were reallocated in the supplemental, and we also are working with getting some matching funds for another grant waived. So we are looking to hear back from that, and that's how we're going to fund the gap for this project. The reclaimed water mainly used for irrigation, festival process, and then groundwater recharging, which is also another phase of this project that we have down the road. We are looking into converting our spray field into groundwater recharge, so we can help our, the low flows in Goldsboro Creek, so.
Is that injection wells?
Yeah, it could be injection wells, and it could be just changing the way that our sprinkler system goes right now, because we lose a lot to evaporation.
Yeah.
So, that's what I have, unless you have some further questions?
Thank you, sir. Anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't.
Maybe we have a reading of Resolution Number 1415-1025.
Resolution Number 1415-1025. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, awarding the reclaimed water tank project to Roglands Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents for contract number 25-005-LP.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1415-1025 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
I think it's a good time that we wrap this up and that we have to use all this money now, because some of that money will expire. So I think it's a good time that we wrap it up and get this going, and I'm always in favor of water projects. So keep it clean and keep it quantified. So thanks a lot for your work on this and making this, putting this together.
Thank you, Brent. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1415-1025 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have another one from Brent.
Yes, so the next project is a public utility and access instrument for PUD3. Brought this on 11/18. Nothing has really changed. This is a by the Lowell One site. Get this installed, and are looking to progress in '26 to install this, and then run power through Olympic Heights and tie in for substations out to the PUD of Jonesburg.
Anyone sign up for public comment, Mary?
No, we don't.
We have a reading of Resolution Number 1406-S1025.
Resolution Number 1406-1025. A resolution of the city council of the city of Shelton, Washington, to grant a public utility and access instrument across property complexes.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1406-1025 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1406-1025 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have Engineering Technician Kenny Oberg and Stormwater Technician Patrick Hoffman here with information about a work order.
Pat, unfortunately, couldn't meet it tonight. We last spoke about this on 11/18. This is our surface water compliance plan, our stormwater compliance plan in the city. Covers citywide as a whole, and reach out to UGA, possibly future UGA, to get this squared away and set up for future growth and development, also maintaining compliance with the ever-changing stormwater regulations that come down from federal government and state. This will address O&amp;M practices, capital project identification, and financial planning to accomplish those, and look at the on-time connection fee or general facilities charge pertaining to stormwater. That's a financial review. That'll also help us out with maintaining compliance for our underground of our MDS permit. There's a large portion of that permit that is called the Stormwater Management Action Plan, and with this compliant, we incorporated this, so it actually identifies any catchment area that, in most cases, is blackened treatment, and in most cases, it is a direct discharge team, let's say, in creeks like Goldsboro, which is a couple of salmon creek. And part of that is getting that funding together and making a plan, getting the preliminary signed, so we can actually implement that project. That's just one aspect of about eight different chapters of this stormwater element that's going to be addressed. A big portion of this, of all of this, tremendously, is about five miles worth of stormwater collector name, getting surveyed and identified in Cameron, so we can get the big hitter items that are in need of replacement because they're 67 years old. So it'll help a lot of those, and we can be strategic with the funds that we do have and people that we choose to go after. Nothing has changed since we last moved in.
Thank you, Kenny. Does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't.
And maybe we have a reading of Resolution Number 1414-1025.
Resolution Number 1414-1025. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute an on-call A&amp;E consultant pool work order with Gray and Osborna for revisions and updates to the city's six-year surface and stormwater property. That's a not full.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
I may adopt Resolution 1414-1025 as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1414-1025 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our next item is 2026 Master Fee, oh, I'm sorry, did we have any questions for Kenny? Sorry, I think I skipped that. No, okay, we're good. I think the second got me. Our next item is 2026 Master Fee Schedule. Intern Finance Director Terry Snitzer has more information for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. For the 2026 Master Fee Schedule, these are fees to charge throughout the city for 2026. There has not been any changes made to the fee schedule since Les presented to you, but I believe Mark wants to clarify on some fees.
Yes, thank you, Terry. I appreciate that. Council, I've had the opportunity to talk with a few of you to clarify some changes that you'll see in Exhibit C that's on the screen now. We've recently come to realize that some of the fire fees, as we talked about on November 18th, we had extensive amount of fire fees included in the fee schedule as edits, and as we dug into this a little more, we wondered why, because we thought these were in the fee schedule already, and they're certainly in our permitting portal, right? So if one goes into the permitting portal and applies for a fire suppression system, those fees are accurately calculated and appropriated to the individual applying for their permit, but we weren't seeing those within the fee schedule. Did a little bit of research and saw that an addendum to the fee schedule was originally adopted back in 2022 when we allied with our permitting portal. For some reason, that addendum was not attached to the fee schedule recently, so Leslie, Fire Chief, Fire Marshal Keith Reitz, was adding those fees to the fee schedule, and as we started editing that, we realized that that's where kind of disconnect was. So the fees are in, they're not necessarily new fees, if you will, they're fees that were not in the fee schedule when we were implementing that or editing that for your review on the 18th. So as you'll see in the copy, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the fees that were adopted previously are within our permitting portal, but we added those on the 18th because they're in red, so any changes were in red. But I highlighted the ones that are in the permitting portal, but they're, again, they are established fees right now, so it's just kind of, I guess reconciling that back into the fee schedule. You'll see a number of, I forget how many, there's about close to two and a half pages of fire fees that were omitted previously that we've added. You'll see those in red and highlighted in yellow. Like I said, I've had the opportunity to discuss this with a few of the council members, but not all of you, because this is a recent development with the holiday last weekend being short work week. So we're certainly happy to bring this back to the council at the next meeting on the 16th of December, if you want some time for further consideration, or we can move forward as the council sees fit tonight.
All right. So any public comment?
We don't have anyone sign up for this.
Do we want to go with reading, or do we want to table this?
I'm fine with moving ahead with this.
All right. All right. We have a reading of Resolution Number 1408-1025.
Resolution Number 1408-1025. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, updating and establishing the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 1408-1025 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? So basically, we're charging these fees, they're just in one spot, not in the other.
Yeah, I guess to simplify it, thank you. I probably should have said that, yes.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion... All right, we have motion and a second to adopt resolution number one four zero eight dash one zero two five as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next city manager Mark Figler has information for us about the city's twenty twenty six legislative agenda.
One moment, so I don't miss anything. So the city of, the city council annually adopts a legislative agenda, um, to work with our thirty-fifth delegation, um, for typically for major infrastructure improvements, but also policy, um, that, that the state may be considering at the same time. Uh, when we met with our delegation back in August of earlier this year, we went through the, the entire, um, legislative agenda and the breadth of, of, of infrastructure improvements and policies that, uh, we thought were priorities. We boiled those down to probably the top priorities with council's, um, guidance, which is the Mountain View Pressure Zone and the new reservoir that's needed there. We are lucky enough to receive five hundred thousand dollars from the state legislature last year. It's going to take another five hundred thousand dollars to get the design work completed. So that's going to be our top priority when we move, um, forward to, so I guess I should go back. The next step in this process after, um, the council approves the legislative agenda is for us to fill out the capital requests and get that to our delegation so they can work through their systems there, um, once the session starts up the first year. Uh, second priority is, uh, new well five. Um, so we need to be planning for, um, for, uh, water production here in the future and meeting, meeting long-term needs. Uh, storage will be more of immediate need, but certainly production is going to be right on its heels if, if it's not here already and planning forward on that. We've got some improvements with well one with replacing the nineteen eighty-nine pump, uh, next year. Um, but with that, um, there's going to be, going to be a need for additional production. Uh, the Shelton Springs Road sewer trunk line extension, uh, we have almost a million dollars in federal funds to extend that sewer main from Tarragon Avenue just past Shelton High School to Highway one oh one. Uh, that money's being made real now. We've got, we'll be going out to, um, an RFP for consultants to do design work, but it doesn't pay for the entire project. So looking for additional funds to help make that real, um, adding to, um, the potential to bring on new housing developments in that area, but also bringing up some of the housing developments that are, that are really on substandard, not only water systems and sewer systems at the same time. Um, I think probably the next, uh, and they're in combination with, I guess, these two projects, the Wallace-Neeland, Olympic Highway North intersection and Wallace-Neeland Shelton Springs intersection. Uh, we've received funding in the past for the Shelton Springs Wallace intersection roundabout after some of the project this year done in-house by our staff to re-signal that it functions much better. And really looking back at the Olympic Highway North intersection and, um, the needs there, how it's the entrance to the north side of town, that business district and the failures that it sees. And then frankly, working with WashDOT because they actually own the west side of that intersection and potentially engaging them, looking at how, um, maybe WashDOT reinvests into that intersection. We utilize, we ask for some, the monies to be reallocated from the Spring Road intersection to that. Maybe we can combine for a project that benefits our existing community, but also might be an economic catalyst for some further development across one oh one because, uh, any development there would have to see some traffic mitigation work done on that intersection right now because it just, frankly, would blow it up even more than it is during peak hours. So that would be needed at that time. So, um, we could see, um, potentially some benefit to, um, uh, the Hall Equities Group maybe, um, working on something over on that side of the road. So, um, it's a short session, uh, sixty days. Um, our delegation didn't have a whole lot of, um, uh, good things to say, I guess, about, um, available funding, but they've done a good job for us over the years and I know they'll continue working for us. So it's our intent to, at the passage of this legislative agenda, to get these capital requests, um, out, work with our, our lobbyist, uh, Troy Nichols over there and continue, uh, throughout the session, providing our, our delegation the information that's most important to, to Shelton and our community so they can, uh, they can go to bat for us over there in Olympia.
All right. Anyone want to say a public comment?
No, we don't.
May I have a read in the resolution one four one zero dash one zero two five?
Resolution number one four one zero dash one zero two five, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, establishing the twenty twenty six legislative agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one four zero eight dash one zero two five as presented.
Hmm, one four one zero, isn't it?
Yes.
One four one zero dash one zero two five. Can you re?
Sure. One four one zero dash one zero two five as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, I, um, I don't know if everybody knows. I'm on the, um, Mason County Substance Abuse Coalition, um, Committee Board. It's not a, a sanction for the city to be on that board, but I've been on it for multiple years. And their main function is keeping kids off of tobacco, vapes and other substances. They've been a part of making, uh, the laws for, you know, being twenty-five foot from a door when you smoke and, and most things, but mainly what I'm concerned is, is the vapes, um, and the kratom and the mushroom powders and the nitrous oxide that's being sold in gas stations to minors. Um, at any age, you could walk in and buy this stuff. And, um, it gets kids high. It's addicting. I believe it's a gateway drug and, or thirty-fifth is not, does know that's one of my big priorities. I would like to maybe just let them know as a group that we are concerned about this and just keep this on their mind. And I can't make motions, but I would entertain a motion to just add some language that, hey, we'd like you to keep look, looking at this. So. Nobody cares about kids here? I mean, this is simple. It's cost nothing for the, for us. It costs nothing for the legislators just to keep it on their minds that this is, you know, this is stuff that you can buy in gas stations. Stuff is terrible stuff. And, um, I'd like them just to be on their mind that, to keep looking at it over the years. We were on a AWC meeting today and, um, I asked a question. They said it's back and forth, back and forth. It's just not consistent to where it's on everybody's mind. So this would be something that we could just add on our, our agenda saying, hey, this is important to us. Our kids are important to us. Let's, you know, let's help them out.
So I, I, I move to amend and add that we look at, uh, gas station, um, what they're selling and, uh, maybe have them look at what, what are the impacts and more studies for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So do we do the amendment first, Mary? Do the amendment first?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to amend one four one zero dash one zero two five, just to add a discussion with our thirty-fifth about gas station heroin is what they call it.
And unregulated substances, is that what we're looking for?
Yes, unregulated substances, correct.
So we're looking to age restrict?
I want them just to be on their mind to let, let Olympia know that it's important. So.
But no policy, just a reminder that we think this is important?
Well, I would like to lead a policy one day, yeah, absolutely.
But, um, for this amendment, just that we keep it on mind, on a mind?
Yes, on their mind, yes.
Okay, I'm good with that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. On amended one four one zero dash one zero two five is, is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, now we have the main motion. We have a, a motion and a sec.
I think that's mute at this point, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
That's mute at this point.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay. We have another item from Mark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, as, um, you heard on November eighteenth, um, Judge Greer's contract expires at the end of, uh, of this year. And according to RCW thirty-five A thirteen oh eight oh, um, I have the pleasure, uh, and responsibility for appointing municipal court judge with the council's approval, um, and confirmation from the council. And so I think it's, again, with, with, um, with pleasure that I, uh, I bring that, uh, that confirmation to the council tonight to reappoint, uh, Judge Stephen Greer to another four-year term in Shelton Municipal Court.
Thank you. Does anyone want to say a public comment, Mary?
We don't have anyone.
All right, may I have a read in the resolution number one four one one dash one zero two five?
Resolution number one four one one dash one zero two five, a resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, confirming appointment of Stephen Greer as a municipal court judge.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I proudly move to approve resolution number one four one one dash one zero two five as presented.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one four one one dash one zero two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Did you want to say anything, Your Honor?
That was how my staff was stuttering.
You can talk if you like for a minute. All right. All right. Another item from Mark on indigent defense.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the city of Shelton is required to provide, uh, indigent defense services for those that can't afford it through municipal court. Uh, we have a contract with Sound Defenders, PLLC, uh, for about the last, I think, about the last eight years since two thousand and eight. Um, they have agreed to continue to provide an indigent defense services for us on another two-year contract. Uh, the increase in services would be about just over twenty-one thousand dollars to the city in twenty twenty-six, um, which is, um, I guess reasonable with the nature of, of indigent defense these days in Washington State. And we'll only be seeing increases moving forward as the, as the caseload counts being required by, um, the state Supreme Court, uh, become, be, you know, become more stringent.
Another hot item for AWC today.
It's, it's on our, it's one of the legislative agendas through AWC and we'll certainly be following that through this session, absolutely.
All right. Anyone want to say a public comment?
We don't have anyone.
May I have a read in resolution number one four one two dash one zero two five?
Resolution number one four one two dash one zero two five, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, approving a two-year contract with Sound Defenders, PLLC, for Shelton Municipal Court Indigent Defense.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one four one two dash one zero two five as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Just that this is a good deal for the city and that we got to lock it down for more than one year. So, and that we're defending our constitutional rights of everyone here. So I, I, I'm happy to move this forward and to approve it.
All right, anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one four one two dash one zero two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mark, more information for us?
Yes, let me wrap this up.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a, if you will, Council, this is an item that you did not see on, on the eleventh and eighteenth because of, um, some impending deadlines. So this is a, a contract amendment with SCJ Alliance for, um, a comprehensive plan update. Um, as you know, we've been working on a comprehensive plan since twenty twenty-three. We're nearing the finish line, but we've, but we've been through some staffing changes. SCJ's been through some staffing changes and some, um, and some other difficulties in getting us to the finish line. Um, the original contract with SCJ Alliance actually expired on June thirtieth of this year. So we are out of compliance with that existing contract. Um, I'd like to bring that into compliance and add a little bit of time on to that, uh, to the end of March. So we have the ability to complete this, complete this comprehensive plan in time to get it to Commerce, get the council, get it to the council for approval, which we won't have time to do this year. Um, this does not add any costs on to the contract. It's just extending the date from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five date to the, um, March, um, thirty-first, March thirtieth of, uh, of twenty twenty-six in order for us to have enough time to get it completed, again, get Commerce review and get their approval and move forward at that point.
All right. Anyone want to say a public comment?
No, we don't.
May I have a read in the resolution number one four one eight dash one one two five?
Resolution number one four one eight dash one one two five, a resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing a contract amendment for comprehensive planning services.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
I may have to approve resolution number one four one eight dash one one two five as presented. Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Yeah, it was my pleasure to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Committee this year and the past eighteen months with the mayor. And, uh, that our process in the city was, was very inclusive about, uh, including young people and other people in the community, not just, uh, the, the same old usual suspects. And, uh, it was really great process to compare and juxtapose our process here in the city versus the process of the county, which was a, a little bit dicey. Um, anyway, I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that, uh, it was really a pleasure to work with the SCJ Alliance and having them allow us all the input back and forth and, uh, including, um, young members of our community and a diverse, diverse, uh, diverse Comprehensive Plan Committee. So, um, it was my pleasure to work with them and I hope that we are in compliance and that we set up the future with our comprehensive plan for really good visioning and, uh, long-term planning. And I think we accomplished that here in the city.
All right. Right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one four one eight dash one one two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ooh, Mark, you have a city manager report for us?
Couple things, please, if you will. Um, uh, Mayor mentioned decorations downtown. That means it's Holi Magic Weekend, so we'll have the tree lighting ceremony and fire pits in the middle of railroad, uh, which is always a great time and very interesting, unique. Uh, and then the parade on Saturday, so looking forward to that. Um, Hanson family and volunteers are setting up the Grisdale Christmas Village, I think, next door, so not the traditional tree maze. So that's going to be going on, uh, all weekend long. We're looking forward to a lot of people coming downtown and enjoying themselves. Uh, right after that, uh, we're anticipating, uh, quite a rainfall event, uh, and some high tide. So, um, we're looking, uh, looking forward to, I think the leaves are mostly done off the trees. There's quite a few in the right of ways, but getting those cleaned up, asking for assistance from our public to make sure storm drains are cleared out and open and don't blow everything out of their yard into the streets, um, because that just adds to some of the, some of the urban flooding that we see when the, when those materials are blown into the streets and, and clog up storm drains. So our crews are, are planning for that. Uh, Public Works Director Jay Harris is, is on top of it and watching this weather event coming and we're, we're getting everybody ready to go. So, uh, we're able to react as much as possible. We always have, when these storm events come, we always have sandbags available that are available to be picked up down by the city shop there. And the crews fill those up and have them available if anybody needs those at that time. And then certainly through, through dispatch and, uh, we have crews available twenty-four seven to respond to any emergencies. So we're, uh, we're prepared for this event.
Any comments or questions for Mark?
What time is the tree lighting on Friday?
I think it's six.
Six?
I think it's at six. I just know I'm showing up by three. So, sorry.
Right. Well, for the audience at home, we want everyone down, down.
Yeah, absolutely right, yeah. Come on down by, um, you know, by six, there'll be the caroling, the kids caroling, uh, just before and then Santa arrives, right? He's going to make his, his visit down, down to that area as well.
All right, see us Friday night.
All right, any new items for discussion?
The following weekend, the downtown's hosting the Cookie Strolls. It'll be fun down here then, too.
It's going to be fun all of December downtown.
It always is.
All downtown.
Such a fun town in December.
Shop local. All right, new items. Um, I wanted to touch just a, for a second on the kratom and stuff. I didn't maybe explain it very well. Kratom is an opiate-like substance that's legal in the United States at this moment. Some states have outlawed it and some states have not outlawed it. Um, it's opiate-like substance that gets you high like opiates. It can be addicting and we've had overdoses in Mason County, according to our coroner, for this. And anybody at any age can just go into Mickey's Deli, I shouldn't have said that, any gas station and buy this, buy this product. There's also the mushroom powder. Um, if you read the back of it, if you take one package, your face will do this. You take two, it'll do this. And, you know, it's just really nasty stuff. The nitrous oxide is huffing, you know. They're selling ninety-nine dollar nitrous oxides in gas stations. What the heck do the gas stations need to be selling nitrous oxide in, you know, a size this big? I actually have a picture of one I saw on my walk, um, last week. Um, but there's about another twenty substances. We've all seen the presentation. And my goal is, is to have our legislators just keep letting Olympia know that this is, stuff needs to be at least age-restricted of anything. There's some argument on kratom out there that it helps people get off of opiates, but there's also, there's also discussion that it's actually moves people to opiates. So it's, I just think adults are adults, but let's not sell it to our twelve-year-olds in gas stations. And I, I'm, just don't think I explained it very well and.
So I've gone around to a bunch of the different gas stations and I've been wired about it myself, including the stores around here that sell it. And every one of them has told me that they only sell it to twenty-one and over. That's why I'm not real supportive of it. I think adults are allowed to do whatever they want. If kids are going to go buy it, that's a problem. And what, I think our health department and everybody else has gone to all these businesses. I know, I know a couple of the people that own the, the smoke shops around here, the health department's gone and said, hey, look, we don't want you selling this to kids. And they said, absolutely, we don't sell it to kids. And a lot of the people that work in the stores feel the same way because they have kids, too. That's why I think when we start harassing these businesses. That's why I think when we start harassing these business owners more and more, then we're going to chase them out. That's why I I just don't want to see hurting small businesses harassing people for stuff that's already being done. And that, and, you know, I mean, hey, they're still giving away crack pipes and needles downtown, too. I'd like to see that get removed before we start harassing the legislators about stuff that's getting sold to adults in the gas station.
Well, the county board that I'm on is actually part of the reason why they're not selling under twenty-one. They've got voluntary compliance right now.
Exactly, so I don't know why we need to.
Well, it's voluntary compliance, so, I mean,
They're doing it.
I'm not saying we that we get rid of it. I'm just saying that we make sure that kids aren't buying it legally. I mean, if it's not illegal, somebody's going to sell it to to a kid. I just, you know, it's, we're here to protect protect people and our and our kids, you know.
I think we should have another study session about it, not just from one person. And I think there are therapeutic values for some of these substances. So I think we should have, we should have a larger conversation and not just rely on one source.
Well, there may be some therapeutic value, but not for a twelve-year-old. That's my my biggest point.
It's not good for kids, but at the same time, you're going to, you know, go attacking other small businesses that are here in the community that obviously people want. If they didn't, they wouldn't sell it, and we know this. This is a fact here.
So we always talk about our drug problem, but we're going to sell stuff that leads to drugs. But that's okay. I just wanted Olympia to know that it's just, it's really important. The government's looking heavily at.
We've gotten the same email from people that have said it was helped them. You know, did you read those two? We got a lot of those, man. It's fact.
Third time, talking about minors. The government's heavily looking at kratom, some of the ingredients in kratom right now. So that that may be mute with kratom, but there's still more substances. But I just wanted to clarify that. I just want to make sure our kids aren't buying this to gas stations, so.
Thank you for your clarification.
All right, there's no other items to discuss. We have a study session on the ninth, Animal Salt Control Operations. And our, we have a special meeting for city volunteer recognition in the courtroom on the sixteenth. And we have a regular meeting on the sixteenth, and we're going to be talking about, we'll have an October financial status report. And no business items at this time, no public hearing, and an action item would be the employee guild contract from today. And so this study session is adjourned at our meeting is adjourned at six fifty-two.